We're going to go. Sorry, do we do that again? We're going to adjourn into executive session. We'll discuss potential litigation with the legal counsel if it's allowed by GW four two dot three oh dot one one zero. Counsel will be in executive session for thirty minutes and will will return at six P M. And we're gonna go back to the meeting room. Thank you. Good evening. Welcome to the city council meeting of December seventeen twenty twenty four. Donna, could you walk off, please?
Need to do the pledge, Miss.
Oh, you're right. I'm out of wax.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, Donna, can you go, please?
Yes, I will. Councilmember Blatch.
Here.
Councilmember Sterns.
Here.
Councilmember Gilmore.
Here.
Mayor Nesko.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sherman.
Here.
Councilmember Sap.
Here.
And Councilmember Gutierrez.
Here.
Thank you, Donna.
You're welcome.
And I forgot to ask, if anybody in the audience needs amplifying headphones, please raise your hand and we'll bring those to you. Not seeing any. Does council have any late changes to the agenda? City manager?
Uh, two things tonight, Mr. Mayor. Um, under presentations, if you don't mind, uh, um, introducing a new employee here at the city of Shelton. And then on the action agenda, uh, uh, G six, um, I'd like to introduce a, um, a motion, um, that recognizes and and our staff suggestion to suspend Sheldon Municipal Code five point three two, uh, in regards to four higher vehicles.
Counsel, do you have that?
Yes.
G six. Right. Are we ready for reading the consent agenda?
Yes.
All right. Donna, can you read the consent agenda, please?
House number one, one, two, three, four, through one, one, two, zero, seven, nine, and E F T payment numbers eight, three, eight, thirteen, five, eight, in a total amount of two hundred and eighteen thousand, three hundred and eighty nine dollars and ninety cents. For warrants, this number four, zero, one, four, through four, zero, one, nine, and one, three, eight, five, one, through one, three, nine, five, three. Warrants, one, one, two, zero, eight, zero, five, through one, one, two, zero, nine, eight, and now of six hundred and forty one thousand, one hundred and twenty two dollars and fifty cents, minutes and minutes of CD of November fifth, twenty twenty four, and the study session of November twelfth, twenty twenty four.
Thank you, Donna.
You're welcome.
There are motion.
Move to approve the minutes.
All right, we have a motion to second to approve the consent agenda as read. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. All right, the council invites the general public to make comments on matters of city business. Comments shall be made, entire council, not individual council members. Please refrain from any personal or disrespectful remarks that create disruption of the means. If unreasonable disruptive conduct continue, you will be asked to leave the meeting. Donna, do we have any sign of federal public comment?
You do, Mr. Mayor. Um, we have Melissa Moore. Did you move in? I will give a general public comment.
Yeah, is is it on the agenda? What you want to speak about?
Yeah.
Okay, so that will come up later.
We have Dean Jewett.
This general public.
Oh, Eric, I understand the rules. Thank you. Uh, well, you done it? Hey, I just wanna chat about some of the camps that we have going on around town. Uh, we've talked about this over and over. Uh, if you guys aren't aware of them, uh, I'm very familiar with leading field trips. So you're more than welcome to come along on a trip with me and I can show you what what I see. Uh, we have camps right up by the, uh, the yacht club that have been disbanded, but they've all dispersed into the hills left and right heading up there. Uh, I call them in, we talk about them, nothing happens. Uh, so I get all, I get pretty confused about that. Uh, I wanna talk about, uh, gentleman that took a shit in my alley. Uh, he's taking shits all over town. He's been thrown out of places, been removed from, uh, multiple areas. Uh, you go into the alleys, it's nothing but a bathroom. So I don't understand why that's allowed to happen. Uh, how does that happen? Is that due to lack of enforcement? Is that due to lack of leadership? Uh, or is it all of the above? So you guys sitting in these chairs need to make some tough decisions. And there's four individuals that I feel make these tough decisions, the three individuals that do not. So hopefully in the next year, so those three individuals will no longer be sitting in those seats. Uh, when you have a lack of leadership and accountability and responsibility, what happens is is you put your community members in harm's way. So an individual can go take a picture of a situation to document it, and then they get assaulted, ran after, threatened, stuff thrown at their vehicles, and basically put in harm's way. Isn't that kind of crazy how that can be allowed to happen in our whole little community? And then if there's an event going on, then we rush in, we clean it up, then we turn our back and it goes right back to the way that it was. It's the whole whack-a-mole type of situation. Uh, Brewer Park at times looks great. As soon as you turn your back on it, it looks like hell again. We've got the corner, uh, right across, uh, what I'm going in like third or fourth there, that is constantly has camping. There's there's pallets there now. There's a whole tent system based off of that tree. So if you look up your own ordinances, there is an ordinance that talks about sidewalks. It talks about impeding the flow of a pedestrian. So if that pedestrian has to go into the street or is impeded in any way, because you allow that to continue to happen, then there's a liability that you assume. We all know what happened to the states or the Supreme Court. Just because you're you're a, uh, city lawyer says you can't do anything about it, you know, take a look at the citizens, step up to the plate.
Thank you, Dean.
There's no one else for general. I didn't get a chance. Get a ride in a traffic.
General public comments.
Yes, yes, we'll sign into shape by Mark.
Over.
Good evening, Miguel, Lindsay, Sharon, Eric, Tom, my brother George, and all who's here tonight. Mine's a little less, um, uh, well, a little quieter than talking about the phoneless, but I just wanna give a heads up to the Public Works for putting those little tabs on the street on Coda so that we can see at night when we drive. Thank you very much, Public Works. I appreciate it. Also appreciate all the work that everybody does. I appreciate all the new businesses that are coming into town. And I challenge each one of you to just take a few minutes and pop your heads in on those new, uh, any business in town. They really, really appreciate it and they know that you care what's coming in. So that's just a little heads up on it. Thanks.
Thank you, Karen.
That's all we have, Mr. Mayor.
This is for general public comment. Hope if you have a, a topic, yeah, the comedy agenda already passed. Yeah, but we do have to get a sign up. You can sign up here right now if you like.
All right, no other public comment. We'll move on to our presentation from Finance Director Mike Giddens.
Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, um, if we can do the the presentation of the public employee first.
Oh, yes.
Why our building inspector? That'd be great. Just cool for for brevity here in the in the meeting. So, um, well, Doug, um, if if you have anything to say, we'll have you step to the podium. That way you're front and center, Doug. As.
I'm the hot.
As much as you might be. Um, Doug, when did you start? I'm sorry.
I started in July and I went on a pre-planned vacation.
That's right.
Then I really started probably beginning in July.
So officially, Doug, where our new building inspector started in, uh, in July, um, as you know, we were recruiting, uh, building inspectors slash building official for some time. Uh, I think that based on Doug's experience in the private sector, really lends a unique perspective to the enforcement of the code and helping individuals through through the code processes. And my time, um, working with him and speaking with him about his method and his approach to this, it's it's really something that a small town like this needs. So I really appreciate that from Doug. He's, um, on a fast track to more certifications and building official, uh, certifications. He wants those little letters at the at the end of his name, right? Um, but we want to take this time because it is a public facing, uh, employee here at the city of Shelton. Um, you tend to hear about permitting processes quite a bit. Introduce Doug, introduce him to the council and the community as well.
Right. Welcome, Doug. We've met a few times and.
Yeah, I'm pretty familiar with, um, your skill, but, uh, I just thought it'd be nice to put some names to the faces and let you know that my queue is always open when I'm not out of the field. If you have any issues or anything, please, go ahead. It's nice meeting you.
Welcome. Excited to have you here.
Thanks, Doug.
Right. Mike, are you ready?
I'm ready. Thank you, Mayor and Deputy Mayor, council members. I'm going to give a brief, um, presentation on the, um, October financial report. It seems a little bit, um, like late news since we've spent a lot of time on the twenty twenty five budget and looking at end fund balances. And then you're considering an amendment, if you will, to the twenty twenty four budget for action tonight. Um, but just to take you through a couple of things, because as we're preparing this, we're also able to look at quite a bit of data because we know what's happening towards the year end. So on page one, we're estimating that revenue will exceed expenditures by just over half a million dollars. Um, I I the supplemental budget that you're considering will correct a little bit of that. Um, so you'll notice that the expenditures, we budgeted them at fifteen million, five sixty five. We're estimating that the will spend fifteen million, five forty eight. That's what the supplemental will correct a little bit. But as we enter into future budgets, that's really close to spending everything we budgeted. Normally, we like to see that be a little under that. And so that's a really slim margin. So that shows that we missed the mark on some things in the general fund budgets because we're pushing it pretty tight, um, as of October. A couple of things will correct on the action, um, that will be taken tonight, assuming it passes. And that will bring it in a little bit better position, but with what we have to work with here, I wanted to point that out. On page two, we show the general fund, um, revenue categories. And this is where I think things are looking pretty darn good. So the second half property taxes have come in. Um, we group all property taxes together. So that's the, um, EMS property tax along with the regular property tax levy. Um, but most of those lines are favorable. Again, some of that's because we've received some grants and donations that will come, um, a couple of them will come in to play as you, um, consider the supplemental budget. But the other part of this is I tend to budget pretty conservatively on the revenue and it's come in a little bit better, in particular the B N O tax. We weren't sure based on that action a year ago to increase that where it would come in. And you'll notice now we're estimating that it's likely to come in just slightly over budget. And for the twenty twenty five budget, as you'll remember, we increased that a bit to kind of compensate for what it had to be. So at the end of the day, that's pretty much, I would say, where our general fund revenue, um, kind of shapes out at just over sixteen, um, million dollars. On, I'm just gonna skip ahead then to page seven and end the presentation here. This is our, um, fund balances across all city funds. Um, you'll notice that everything, I always say this in the estimated ending fund balance, once we want that in the positive. Um, a lot is happening in the city this year, but in particular, the budget that you adopted for twenty twenty five has a lot of activity coming through these funds. So there'll be a good deal happening. We don't draw the overall funds down a whole lot. You'll notice we started the year at twenty three million and that's where we're ending it. So due to some grants and other revenue that we received that'll be used on future projects, we're estimating that we end right kind of in the same position we started. And then the vacancies citywide, we're showing at six point five across all city funds, three point five in the general fund, and three in the other city funds. So I'll end my presentation there. Everything's looking good. We'll spend a little bit more time as we enter the first of the year to take a look back at twenty twenty four and really show you where we ended up for sure, because a lot of activity is happening in these last couple of weeks of December. And then we leave our fiscal year open for the first three weeks approximately. If January solidated invoices or things that occurred in twenty twenty four, then we'll pay out of twenty twenty four. It's a pretty limited period of time, but some of our consultants, for instance, that have done some work in December, we wanna make sure that that can get charged into the twenty twenty four budget. So we'll work on that.
Thank you, Mike. Anybody have any questions for Mike? Comments? Thank you again for all the hard work, Mike, and your staff. Thank you. See you in the address, well. All right, first business item, please. Resolution to accept a lease agreement with Macecom Park Recreation Supervisor Jordan Papples has details for it.
Thank you, Mayor and members of council. Tonight I bring you a lease agreement with Macecom in the city. Um, right now they utilize a little over twenty four hundred square feet in this building for their Macecom nine one one dispatch and general operations. Um, so this agreement would be for the year, the calendar year of twenty twenty five only. Um, in the past, we've done usually as a two-year increment, but we do know that they will be relocating next year. So it's only for up until whenever they decide to leave the premises. Um, that day is not as of right now specified, so more to come later on on that. Um, and during that time, the city will also work with Macecom on a more detailed move out plan. Um, it will take more city staff and departments and that process. It will be a big thorough process, so there'll be more to come on that later as well. Um, Macecom as of right now will be paying one thousand eight hundred, no, I'm sorry, one thousand eighty five dollars and ninety seven cents per month for rent. And then there's an additional cost of three thousand nine hundred and thirty six dollars and ninety cents per month. And those additional costs include utilities, um, building maintenance, custodial services, supplies, communication, um, uninterrupted power supply and generator cost. Um, these amounts are based off of twenty twenty three actual costs, but the hours, an hour, sorry. And then we use the twenty twenty five rates for staff. So that's how you allocate those numbers that you see there. Um, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jordan. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, move to place resolution number one, three, eight, one, three, five, eight, dash, one, one, two, four, on the January seventh, twenty twenty five consent agenda for further consideration.
You. Comments or questions, Jordan? Thank you, Jordan. We have motion to second to place resolution number one, three, five, eight, dash, one, one, two, four, on the January seventh, twenty twenty five consent agenda for the consideration. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hey, our first action item is a resolution for a contract amendment. Assistant Public Works Director Aaron Nix has information.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, uh, honor the work of this. Bring forward to you an amendment. Um, if you recall in our last study session, we discussed our reclaim, uh, the M D R treatment facility in which we received in twenty twenty one about two million dollars to replace a storage tank, um, so that we could actually store a product and sell that as demand incurs. Um, the intent here is we're trying to ultimately we'll ramp this up to take more flows with the idea that we're gonna, we wanna get water to that facility because we can sell it, um, but also because it it serves its recharge for old program. So I bring forward forward to you, if you recall, um, I I talked to you guys a couple of months ago, this specific project, and I I'm not blaming anybody, but it was scoped out rather poorly from the gap goal on this. Um, it doesn't mean that it's costing us money or those types of things. Uh, what it does mean is that we didn't cover all the areas. And this specific amendment is, I think it's critical. It's a minimal amount. It's about sixty five hundred dollars or so. What we wanna do is you're, we're gonna place this half million tank that's gonna sit on the slab basically on the ground. We wanna do some geotechnical exploration to make sure that you can understand with a half billion gallons of water sitting there, the pressures that it's putting on that. We wanna make sure that it's stable and that's safe. Um, and I think this is a very minimal internship policy to ensure that that's the case. Also, keep in mind, this is all grant funded, so this is not costing the city in the sense that, um, directly. So this will be covered under the grid. So you have any questions? If you recall, we did an amendment number four. That was for the gophers. If you remember, we had to do a habitat. the grid. So you have any questions? If you recall, we did an amendment number four. That was for the gophers. If you remember, we had to do a habitat analysis. In the future, these, and it really depends on how the council wants it. I can bring these to you as they come. Ultimately, what I'd like to do is some out of efficiency is at the initial scoping, you have a full package in front of you. So I don't have to keep coming up here and asking you guys for additional funds. It's just, it needed to be scoped out that way specifically, and it did. So again, no offense against staff, it just wasn't. So I have this amendment before you. There will be one more amendment for this, you guys, as for construction management, because this project is going to be constructed within the first month or two after the first. Want to say about that? Links are on hand, ready to go. We see that it's worked. So if you have any questions, please ask.
Thank you, Aaron. Donna, anyone else have a public comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
I have a reading of resolution number one three six four dash one one two four.
Resolution number one three six four dash one one two four. A resolution of the Council of the City of Shelton, Washington, authorizing the city manager to approve amendment number four to the contract for design services associated with the satellite wastewater treatment plant, new plant tank project.
Thank you, Donna. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, move to adopt resolution number one three six four dash one one two four as presented.
Your question?
It's always going to say this, but water is life and I'm always supporting quantity and the quality of water that we have for residents. Thank you very much, Mr. Nix.
Thank you, Aaron. No other comments? But we have motion in the second to adopt relation number one three six four dash one one two four presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, carries. Should we have an ordinance for a budget supplemental for the 2024 budget? Finance Director Mike, give us more information for us.
Thank you. This is the same supplemental that I presented at the business port of the evening on December third. Nothing has changed. As a reminder, this is a year-end cleanup on the budget, recognizing some expenditures that primarily by way of grants, also de-obligating some funds out of the capital funds that were expended and certain cleanup. But again, nothing has changed since the first presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Donna, anyone else have a public comment?
No, there is none.
All right. Have a reading of ordinance number two zero two six dash one zero two four.
Ordinance number two zero two six dash one zero two four. An ordinance of the City of Shelton, Washington, amending the annual budget for the year end to begin December three, March twenty twenty-four.
Thank you, Donna. We have a motion.
Mr. Mayor, move to approve ordinance number two zero two six dash one zero two four as presented.
Thank you. Comments or questions?
Just want to thank Mike for all this hard work and for letting, explaining to us about the budget and all the little things that we have to move around and shift. And it's quite complicated. And thank you for letting me know and bringing it down to my level to understand. Thanks, Mike.
We have a motion in the second to approve ordinance number two zero two six dash one to one zero two four presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both. Okay, carries. All right, now we have another, please, the manager, right? You want to hear?
No, this is the fleet management. Stay on, stay on target with the G three, please.
Okay, so Mike, we have another item from you, a lease agreement.
Yes, thank you. So again, nothing has changed since the presentation at the December third meeting. That's a reminder. The City of Sheldon has been studying the concept of moving the city's life duty fleet to a leasing program through enterprise fleet management. It's the same program that Mason County uses and we're asking for you to authorize these agreements for the same purpose assigned.
Thanks. Thank you, Mike. Donna, anyone else have a public comment?
No, there is none.
Have a reading of resolution number one three five five dash one two four.
Resolution number one three five five dash one one two four. A resolution of the Council of the City of Shelton, Washington, authorizing the city manager to sign contracts for enterprise.
Thank you, Donna. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, move to approve resolution number one three five five dash one one two two as presented. One one two four.
So, you. Comments or, comments or questions?
Just want to reiterate what we said in the last meeting is that this will eventually save us money and keep our fleet new and operating well, and that the county has a similar a similar program in place. And this will make sure that our, especially our police officers, will have a fleet of fresh units that are under well repair. And that this is a financially stable move in the future. And we're not, we're spending money to save money. Thank you, Mike, for giving us all the information we need to make it happen.
I've heard nothing but good things from the county about this program. You see, most of their cars look good. And the last thing we want is a broken down patrol car on the side of the road.
We have motion in the second to approve resolution number one three five five dash one one two four presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both. Okay, carries. Now we have an ordinance for sales and use of services. The United Market has been proposed for.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council. I'm joined here by Community Economic Development Director Jay Hill. We're going to take a little more time than I think what we previously do for the action agenda because of the topic tonight. So bear with us for those of you that were here two weeks ago. And for those that are in the audience here, you tonight are watching online, hope to provide some background information that you haven't already received. So the, the council has reviewed options and opportunities to address affordable housing in a number of ways. At the June eleventh council study session, a majority of the council directed staff to bring some finding options and alternatives for the, for further review. So back on October eighth, staff put some options together for, for council review, receive feedback to bring back what was codified in RCW eighty-two fourteen five three oh as the housing and related services sales tax. So that's what we're bringing to you tonight. Just as a little more background, the priorities that have been recommended to council through the homelessness task force that was established in twenty twenty-two, that, that task force met over I think over six, six meetings here in the civic center. It was comprised of council members, county commissioners, local business owners, law enforcement, social service providers. And they provided this council need to make sure, five, five priority recommendations from the, excuse me, seven priority recommendations from the, from those meetings. I'll go through those. One is a mitigation site that was deemed a short term or a one-year goal. At this point, I'll talk a little bit about what the city's done to address these, these recommendations. City supplied twenty thousand dollars of ARCA funds, America Recovery Planning Act funds from pain in twenty twenty-two to community lifeline for their operations. Those were funnelled through I think Mason County, housing, health board, if I remember correctly, before my time. Number two is support for grant applications for current shelter operations. The City of Shelton has provided letters of support to Shelton Youth Connection for construction of transitional housing. And then obviously we're partnered with Shelton Veterans Village with New Horizons housing for the project that is located thirteen street on city property. That's a lease to New Horizons. Number three was support for grant applications for community partners to provide rapid rehousing. I'm unaware of any efforts to the city at that point to support that, that recommendation. Number four was one or two Mason County-focused designated crisis responders potentially embedded with the Shelton Police Department. Luckily enough, through grants, we have had a designated crisis responder embedded with our police department since early into twenty-three. I will caveat that by saying the designated crisis responder left their role. They're not hired by the City of Shelton. It's provided through a partnership with Thurston Mason Behavioral Health Organization back in September sixth. And we've been without that since September sixth. But again, we have one DCR in place funded through a hundred thousand dollar grant through through the TMVHO. That is being filled, I believe, fairly soon. And we hope to have a DCR back in place and the grant funding in twenty twenty-five. The fifth recommendation was a storage locker program co-located with a mitigation site that has not been pursued by the City of Shelton to date. Number six is a public dashboard on the city website. It details what shelter beds are available. We really, since that time, have come up with a reasonable solution because there's one shelter operator. They notify us of the beds available each day, each night. And they have told us they are reserving two shelter beds for those that may need them in emergency situations. So our first responders can react to that and get people into those beds if they need the as far as other shelter beds or anything like that. There's no other shelter provider in the City of Shelton that we're aware of. And so having a dashboard necessarily for one site is already being taken care of through through their emails to the city and support, or at least communication and staff, including law enforcement. Number seven was affordable housing, long-term, three to five-year goal. The city's taken several measures to date to help I guess, increase housing stock, which hopefully leads to affordable housing. One is through development regulations. We've reduced the minimum lot size to forty-five hundred square foot in the city. That was reduced down from six thousand square feet. That makes building more affordable. We have also removed the restrictions on duplexes and triplexes in neighborhood residential zone. Previously, those were limited to one per block without a conditional use permit. Now with a minimum lot size of six thousand square feet, a duplex is allowed outright and seventy-five hundred square feet, right? Jay, for a, for a triplex allowed outright. We, under the current comp planning effort, we're looking at multifamily zones that would allow multifamily housing outright. Right now, there's an additional land use process through a plan unit development process, much like a conditional use permit process that leads to some uncertainty, or at least the unknown going forward from a developer, how the hearing examiner process would work. We're developing with the help of the Citizens Advisory Committee, multifamily zoning that would be most appropriately located in the city to allow those, those types of housing developments outright. We have reviewed pre-approved housing plans, ADUs or something like that, that could be brought to the city. They could be picked up over the counter. It would reduce the time and effort and cost for somebody associated with a housing project or building an ADU in their backyard and increasing housing stock. There are multifamily tax exemption areas that could be established by the council. And we've reviewed that in a study session as well. All those zones aren't in place at this point. As well as things like inclusionary requirements for bonus slots if a subdivision dedicates or covenants certain amount of lots for affordable housing, they could receive bonus lots. Again, something that hasn't been considered by council. I know you expressed interest of, we just need to get to the point where we're able to bring some ordinances forward for your, for your review. And then live work units and things like that that provide more flexibility within some of our mixed-use zones and areas like that that might be underutilized or, or housing make more sense for people that want to work and live in the same units at that same time. Oh, excuse me. Sure. Missing anything here? So the affordable housing and related services sales tax is codified, like I said, in RCW eighty-two fourteen five thirty, allows the council to adopt a one-tenth of one percent sales tax within the City of Shelton, meeting certain criteria. And that is a sixty percent of the funds raised would be utilized for construction or acquiring affordable housing. That may include emergency transitional supportive housing, new units for affordable housing within an existing structure, so expanding that. Other facilities providing housing related services requiring land for those purposes, constructing or acquiring behavioral health-related facilities or requiring land for those purposes, and funding the operations and maintenance costs of new units of affordable housing facilities where housing related programs are provided or newly constructed evaluation and treatment centers. The within those affordable housing facilities, they must be provided for individuals or groups whose income is at or below sixty percent of the median income of the county posing this tax. So within city limits, individuals, families must be sixty percent of the AMI average monthly income and must be meet these demographics. So persons with behavioral health disabilities, veterans, senior citizens, persons who are homeless or at risk of being homeless, and that includes families with children, unaccompanied homeless youth or young adults and persons with disabilities and domestic violence survivors. The remainder of the monies under that, under this code section could be used for the operation to every or evaluation of behavioral health treatment programs and services and or housing related services for behavioral health. You know, Jay has put together kind of what we've called a menu, if you will, of services that could be funded under this type of program. I know we haven't gotten to the point of really refining that, but there's, there's a number of things that have been identified through the Mace County Housing Needs Assessment, the Homelessness Task Force from twenty twenty-two within the code that we could address. So I will turn it over to Jay to talk a little bit about that.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. So as we're talking about the projected tax revenue of about three hundred and ten thousand dollars with the cost of building at around three hundred fifty dollars a square foot, that doesn't get us a lot of new units or whatnot. So as we look at potential for how to utilize these funds, we want to be a force multiplier if we're going to use, if, if the funds are adopted and how we use them. Instead of trying to undertake a project just by ourselves, because we would have to save up for several years to have a meaningful amount to actually do something. By leveraging the funds through offsetting existing permit costs, for example, or general facilities charges, by providing staff support for grant applications and for housing services and some other things. We can use that money instead of just directly providing, we augment those in our community who are already providing services and make it easier for them to do so. So, for example, instead of the city trying to build its own facility, it would stabilize existing services or fund other entities providing services, so on and so on. I mentioned offsetting the city's utility connection charges. Currently, the cost to connect to our water sewer services is seventeen thousand dollars per single family home. And that has been, at least for a couple of projects, deed restricted affordable projects that we've had proposed with the city. That's been a breaking point for them. It just doesn't pencil out with those costs. That is our cost to own and operate our water system. We can't waive that without making that fund whole. So we, we have to get that money from somewhere. We don't have a general fund source to make those offsets right now. Purchasing land from the open market or from the city's water utility, we have a lot of land that's been identified for potential surplus within the city. And it's possible, again, we can't take the water from, or sorry, take the land from a water pump without making that fund whole. And this would provide a potential source of revenue for doing so. Or land on the open market. There's properties that have become derelict or whatnot that if we were to take an equity position in the property and then repurpose it for affordable housing, we could better utilize something that might be blight on the community and turn that around into something that could provide housing for people. We can directly fund construction of new units at underdeveloped properties. So if, if there was a multifamily housing project already, whether that be for-profit market rate or a nonprofit, one of our partners, this funding could directly support construction potentially at those places provided it was covenanted to meet the special needs populations identified within the state statute. One other thing that we've identified is, and this came from the housing, the homeless task force as well, is developing ADU plans. And cutting the permit costs for ADUs. Again, we have to make our funds whole in doing some of these things. Can't constitute a gift of public funds, except in some of these cases where we're dealing with the state. In equated language, calls it the poor and infirm. But generally speaking, you know, the folks that were identified as special needs populations were qualified. So general fund permits and revenues can be waived by ordinance and action of the council, but there's still a cost But um, there's still a cost to the city in reviewing, processing, creating these ADU plans. Um, and making them available. Uh, and then the last thing is required infrastructure, streets, sidewalks, and other improvements. Um, we've had a couple of nonprofit housing providers within the community that, um, that's been a huge cost for them is putting in the infrastructure. That is needed to support this, and this is beyond just the water and sewer connection costs. This is curb sidewalk. Place for somebody to be able to walk off the road to get to where they need to go, um, and it's especially important for a lot of these um lower-income. Uh, projects, because uh a lot of times there's multiple individuals in housing. They may not all have vehicles. They need to walk and we need to give them a safe place to do so. So um, and, and again, had a couple of these projects in the last few years where that infrastructure cost has been, I make a great point. We've lost uh at least one project that I can definitely point to and another one that it seemed like that was probable with the reason. Um, we've had a couple of other projects where I know that would have immensely helped the, the local provider to get their work done. Um. One of the last things um. Is uh housing coordination services. So as I mentioned at the last presentation, um, we were underway with our comprehensive plan right now. Looking at a lot of different housing options, and one of the things that we heard during our listening sessions with. Uh, everyone from the business community to social services providers to even civic clubs. Um, is housing coordination. Uh, a lot of people wanting to move to Shelton don't know where or how to find homes. Not everything is listed in the paper. Not everything's, you know, it's not necessarily clear to somebody moving to Shelton for the first time that uh Kitsap Housing is a place that you would get housing. We're not Kitsap County, so why would people think to look there for, for housing? So there's, there's no like coordinated entry kind of program for, for low-income housing. Uh, for uh learning where to get some of uh the resources that they need, so that might be a possibility. To provide those services, and again, the revenue can support housing programs separated, uh separate from the direct provision of housing. Um, so uh, having uh a housing planner. Uh, would be a way that we could have someone on staff to not only provide help with the coordination services, but also take on some of these projects. There's a, a lot of work to be done um in that position, uh whether it's grant application, helping our partners get grants. Providing letters of support, a whole host of other activities. Um, this position would. I, i- if this was one of the things that council selected, would be uh another opportunity to leverage the funds to get more funds by, by making us available. There's been a couple of times in very recent memory where um we've been asked to apply for chip grants, click grants, and a couple of other housing grants that. You know, the minute, the request comes in at the last minute, we have fifty other things going on in the city. We're trying to get it all done, but we don't have a dedicated person to run that project. And if there was somebody who that was their, part of their charge, it would be a lot easier um to go out proactively, find these projects before. You know, two weeks before the deadline or a month before the deadline or whatnot. We could be uh a lot more proactive about. Uh, getting some of these grant funds applied for and making the support of a house. So that is not an exhaustive list of the things that are possible. Those are some of the things that we identified as probably the. What I would say the most bang for the buck, if we're going to do this, um, you know, we wanna be effective. Uh, we don't wanna just collect a bunch of money that sits there and doesn't do what was intended for, and we don't wanna overpromise and oversell something we can't deliver. Um, so. Regardless of how the money is spent, uh sixty percent of the amount has to be spent on direct provision of housing. There's a lot of different ways. Different provision can be interpreted from the statute, but that's hundred and eighty-six thousand from that. And then the remaining forty percent of that has, uh, can be used for housing services. It can go to rent provision as well. Um, but it can be used for housing services, uh, shelter stabilization, some other things that are, are not necessarily. You know, capital construction. Um, so again, attachment A included just kind of, you know, a, a sample budget of something that could be done. Um, it included uh some money for going out and getting those ADU plans and having pre-stocked, pre-approved ADU plans. Um, that's something that's worked in some communities with great effect, uh, not in others, but I think here it would be pretty popular, um, because. And you would just be able to walk into the, the permit office and say, you know, I wanna put a, a C two in my backyard. And it's already been reviewed and approved by an engineer by the building. We just have to, you know, confirm setbacks and a few other code requirements, and then you're off the races. So.
Wait, say what ADU means.
Oh, sorry, accessory dwelling. I apologize.
So another home on your property, a second home, grandma apartment or mother-in-law apartment?
Yeah, and uh there's uh in the, in the communities that have adopted these uh ADU plans, they usually have a kind of a broad variety. Everything from a small studio in your backyard to a, a carriage house unit, which is uh an apartment over a garage. So if you have an older home that doesn't have a garage, and you've always wanted one, now you can put a, you know, potentially a, a dwelling unit above that. And that the lease or rental of that dwelling unit um can be to, you know, family members. It can be low-income individuals. It can be to, you know, have market rate. There's a lot of different ways that can be done as well. So um, I'm happy to answer any questions about the kinds of things we can do with the money or, or. You know, obviously, as, as we're talking about this tonight, this is uh ideas of what we could do with the money, not. Obligating specific expenditure of the money by accepting the grant or by accepting the tax uh. Happy to answer any questions.
Before we go to public comment, we, we talked about a committee of citizens to. To advise, correct?
I think that's one option that if, if this was so passed that an advisory committee or subcommittee could be formed to advise. Vice counsel expenditures, absolutely.
Okay. Donna, anyone want to say a public comment?
Yes, we do, Mr. Mayor.
Our first in person, the name is Erin Myers. And I'm not sure, Erin. You wanna say to the I am?
Yes.
Greetings, Mayor and City Council. My name is Erin Myers, and I work at Community Lifeline of Mason County, which is the only operating low-barrier. Adult homeless shelter in our community. I'm here to tell you today that I'm in support of this bill because I work closely with the population of our community. This bill is intended to impact. As a case manager at Community Lifeline, I work towards helping people find permanent supportive housing, transitional housing. Detox and treatment services for addiction and mental health services here in Mason County. Would like to, to take this time to also acknowledge the community's concerns about some of the homeless population here in Mason County. And to our business owners who have their businesses impacted by people lawyering around their businesses, panhandling, and littering. And have a fair witness to people experiencing severe mental health crisis. I believe that this tax, that this tax bill will help address the concerns the community has by providing more funds for transitional and affordable housing. Detox and treatment in connection to mental health services, which will help save lives in the city of Shelton and keep it an amazing place to work in later. Just like to thank you today for this time.
Thank you, Erin.
Next speaker is Kirsty Rose.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Kirsty Rose. Um, I am a resident and small business owner in Mason County. And I would like to address my commentary to not only the council, but the public as well. Um, I understand that for most people, myself included. The idea of sales tax increasing and having an unexpected price change to factor into their weekly and yearly budget is worrying. But if all you know about the proposed change is that the sales tax is increasing. Uh, I'm sure that's a red flag. However, the reality of this proposal is that it's. Is that it isn't a change that will significantly affect the majority of residents in the city of Shelton. With the proposed increase being at point zero one percent. Uh, the math broken down. Means that if you were to spend a thousand dollars on a sales tax eligible purchase, you would only spend ten cents towards the new tax. If you wanna discuss larger numbers, in twenty twenty, Washington State collected an average of twen- two thousand nine hundred dollars in sales tax. Per person, which would be about twenty-six thousand four hundred dollars in sales tax eligible purchases. The proposed zero, uh, point zero one percent tax would add twenty-six dollars and forty cents to that amount. But for the average person's weekly purchases, your non-eligible groceries and health items will still remain tax-free. You'll pay one cent per fifty-dollar dinner and not, it's not even one cent added to your daily coffee order. Yet by the end of the year, that's three, three hundred and ten thousand dollars, which may not be enough to address the affordable housing problem as a whole. But that will go towards helping arrange the people who you might interact with on a daily basis. These people are your neighbors, possibly your cashier, waiter, or barista, maybe even your friends and family, not just nameless statistics. Statistics on a piece of paper. It's a drop in the bucket for most of us, but a drop in the bucket still creates a ripple effect that will benefit the community for years to come. Thank you for your time.
Kristy.
Next, we have Erin Marsnap.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Um, I'm a professional in town as well as a volunteer at Community Lifeline. Just wanna talk about um taxes, um level levies for fire departments usually pass. With little problem because we are worried about our safety, right? We need them, and so we will pay that tax because we want our house to be saved. When we think about people who are homeless or mentally ill, we usually think about them. It doesn't apply to us. Certainly, few of us in this room. The stats are that fifty-nine percent of people in the U.S. are one paycheck away from homelessness, which is scary, scary to think about. And about mental health, about twenty-three percent of people in the U.S. experience mental health. Well, a new diagnosis every year is um. Twenty-three percent of Americans are diagnosed with mental health every year, diagnosis. So one in five of us statistically has a diagnosis for mental health. Depression, anxiety, bipolar, PTSD, schizophrenia. Um, and the facts of Americans are, we're not great with coping. So if we have stress and we have mental illness, we're gonna cope maybe not well with alcohol and drugs. So the population that we deal with are really vulnerable adults. Um, rents in this town are going up. I saw a one-bedroom travel trailer for rents. One bedroom um for twelve hundred dollars a month, which is ridiculous. Um. We have so few resources in this town, in this county, that um landlords are able to pay or charge whatever they want. And people will pay it because they're desperate. We need to be able to pass this tax because. We can prevent homelessness with this money. Um, we can give people a chance to own homes. Um, that they might not have been able to own or rent places that they maybe couldn't have rented if we didn't support them in this. I would like us all to think about supporting our community and um giving our neighbors a hand up. Without pulling the rug out from underneath them. Thank you.
Thank you, Erin.
Next speaker is Megan South.
Good evening. Thank you for taking time to let me speak. I see a lot of similarities here where the city of Shelton is heading. Uh, the town I came from in Southern California, city of Oceanside, went down the same path forty years ago. And uh they created a bureaucracy that just took more and more money, and they were constantly feeding it. And they didn't accomplish anything. So I'm against this. I don't see the value of it long-term. And if you're going to take money out of the pockets of citizens. Uh, in this community that have worked for it or retired on fixed incomes. Then let them decide whether they want to do it. I don't think you should just arbitrarily pass a tax. Even though it seems so small and insignificant, some of these seniors are on really, really tight budgets. And I think it behooves you to give the city of Shelton residents the potential. To decide whether or not they want to approve this tax or not. It's easy to say, yeah, let's just pass this tax and we'll take more money out of these people's pockets. But I don't think it's right, and the bureaucracy I saw created in Oceanside didn't solve anything. And so now you've got a city that has people running around in vans, giving out blankets to the homeless before a storm. Blows in San Diego, and then after the storm's gone, you've got the city maintenance crews going out a week later, picking up all the blankets. And clothes that the homeless outreach group gave them, just discarded. Cause they, the homeless outreach people are gonna come back and give them more stuff to weather the storm. So um. These people uh, I've got a real soft spot for veterans. I'd cave in about anything for a military veteran. But uh, I think you're headed down a, a path that you don't really realize how you're gonna get sucked into. And it will just keep demanding more and more of your money, tax money, the citizens of Shelton's tax money. So uh, I would advise you to look real hard at this and give the people of Shelton. The voters, residents that live here, a chance to vote on something. This is really significant. Granted, it's only one-tenth of one percent, but you do that ten times, it's a full percent. It's real easy to do it after you do it once. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Melissa Moore.
Evening, esteemed community members, council members, and fellow advocates for the well-being of our city. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to speak today about an issue that holds tremendous importance for the future of our community. As you are aware, the city has proposed, has proposed a modest tax increase. While these tax increases are often met with concerns today, I want to highlight why it is not only a necessary step. Uh, but also crucial investment in the heart of our Shelton community and the nonprofit organizations that work tirelessly to strengthen our communities. Nonprofits are the backbone of so many services in our community, from providing food and shelter to those in need. Offering mental health services, supporting education, empowering local youth, providing low and no-income housing, and advocating for our community. Our nonprofits make this city a better place for everyone. They work with limited resources, often relying on grants, donations, and volunteer labor. They are the first responders to many of our compute, our community's most pressing needs. But here's the reality, these organizations, I come from Habitat for Humanity, face mounting challenges. From rising costs of operations to decreased funding sources, they are being asked to do more and more with less. It's not to be survival of those nonprofits that is at stake, but the well-being of those that they serve. This tax increase will help to stabilize and up, uplift these organizations, enabling them to continue their vital work within our community. This increase will directly contribute to strengthening the capacity of our nonprofits. It will provide consistent funding. Yes, it's not a whole lot of money, three hundred and ten thousand dollars. I can only build three houses with that. But my three houses are gonna be sustainable for those thirty years. Um, support growth and expansion. We're gonna invite more community members to let them know that we are here for our community. It's gonna uh add additional funding for our nonprofits. If we go to grants, we have the city's backing with, with. Five thousand, ten thousand dollars, we have that partnership to take to our grant writers. Um, it creates more jobs and volunteer opportunities. So what money you are investing into our nonprofits and into our housing community, we are putting that right back into our very city. Which I love and adore. This is why it's so important for the cities to work with nonprofits. Um, the one percent in.
Wait one.
Tax is a small but significant step towards a brighter fu- future for our entire community. By ensuring that our nonprofits have the financial stability and resources that they need, we empower them to continue their work. Expand their services and reach more people in need. It's an investment, not just in an or- organization themselves. But in the very fabric of this city of Shelton.
Thank you, Melissa.
Next, we have Jennifer Scott.
Mayor, thank you, uh, council members. Uh, my name is Jennifer Scott, and I'm a City of Shelton resident. Uh, I work for New Horizons Community at the Shelton Veterans Village as a case manager. Uh, I'm here to share my support for the one-tenth of one percent sales tax and um. I recognize why some might want uh this to go to a valid vote versus a councilmatic. But I feel it creates an unnecessary um expense. It will delay the implement, implementation of the path is. And most critically, it could result in lost opportunity if the council passes similar ordinance or to keep doing so. We currently have, at the Veterans Village, we have thirty cottages for um veterans. And currently, we have twenty-five of those cottages are occupied. Um, the veterans that we have there, every one of them has worked to not only meet their goals to become a part of this community. So as a case manager, um, I help them. So as a case manager, I help them decide what their goals are and then we make a plan to reach those goals. So we have veterans now who, a year ago, were on the streets of Shelton who are volunteering in our community, who have jobs and are spending money here in our community and who would have, as a homeless person, any one of my veterans would have given the shirt off their back. And one-tenth of one percent is just a very small, small thing to ask to support not only homeless veterans, but homeless, homeless in general in this community. It's a very viable resolution to some of the complaints from the public, a way to address it. It takes money to solve these problems and this is a very small way that the community can help to, too simply.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Next is Holly Kahoon. Hi, my name is Holly Kahoon. I'm a business owner here in town. And I just wanted to come to say that I disagree with this and I think it should be brought to the ballot vote for the people of Shelton to know. The downtown business community is struggling mightily with all the homelessness, the vandalism. We, you know, incur so many extra bills to deal with the situation and we aren't supported at all with the city. We call in repeatedly and sometimes things are done, sometimes not. We're just left to clean up the mess. We can't handle what we have. So I just feel that people need to bring it to, you need to bring it to a ballot vote. Let people of Shelton realize what we want to do. Our downtown atmosphere is totally changing. The environment's changing and we can't handle what we have. We need to enforce our ordinance that are on the books, which they are not enforced. And we just, downtown after five looks like zombie land down there. So, you know, people need to know, people need to vote where their money is going. Thank you.
Thank you, Holly.
Next is Dean Jewitt.
But we all know who Eric Johnson is with Como News. Did a piece a few years ago, Seattle is dying. I know that some people said, oh, that's not true. They're blowing it way out of proportion. Well, here we are years later with millions spent on the problem and it's only gotten worse. Here's a lady who's a lifelong Democrat shop owner in Capitol Hill, Seattle. She has since changed to Republican because she's seen these policies do more harm than good. Washington had a chance this last election, but thanks to a few counties, we lost that chance. Okay, so we all seen that, that video. You're throwing good money after bad. You know how much money's came into this county? Over two-point-five million dollars. What is it got? It's got us what we have right now. Is it working? Doesn't seem like it is. So I hear people talking about, and everybody that's done most of the positive talks for this, for this tax, are all the nonprofits that don't have to deal with this as a business side. Okay, just the other day, I had to pick up human shit with a cup. Did you come down and help me, Miguel? Eric? I don't think so. How do you think we're supposed to deal with that? The thing of it is that point zero-one percent has nothing to do with the amount. It has to do with the way that you're going about it. If it's a vote of the people, then shut up, Dean Jewitt, and I don't say a damn word. But if you don't put it to a vote, you're going to hear me and I won't shut up. Do you know what percentage of the fire department's budget goes in three-to-four block radius around their department? Over seventy percent. You ever heard the bird feeder story? Little old lady gets bird feeder out in the woods. See, the little tweety birds coming, they eat the bird, you know, then you got big birds coming. Seed going every which way. You get squirrels coming and just you got this melee going on. You got foxes, you got critters coming all over. You know what? You take away the bird feeder, what happens? Problem goes away. So can we do that? Probably not. But I think that what we need to do is not be passing a tax by the people that are sitting in front of me versus the people that are out in the community. And you guys had the opportunity to do that. You had three options and you chose this option. And you chose it for a reason. What is that reason? I think we all know because I don't think that the, that the people would pass it. It's only point zero-one percent. How did we get to almost nine percent sales tax in Mason County? You think we all started at nine percent right out of the gate? I don't think so. It all adds up after time, over and over and over. How long have the nonprofits been working and it's gotten worse and worse? Every pick count we have goes up by a hundred or two-hundred people. What's the next pick count going to be at? Thank you.
Thank you, Dean.
Thank you, Mike Olson.
Thank you, Mike Olson. Over the past few years, the citizens have been asked for increased taxes on a number of things. Libraries, fire stations, school levies. You know, you spin a vote to the people and they approve these things. They're not stupid. Why are you choosing to do this with four people in this room to impose this tax on the whole county? That doesn't seem very democratic to me at all. And I think too, that if you, you look at it, you know, you want to talk to the people, get out there and spread this around. It's a great idea. And I'm not saying the idea is not wrong. I'm saying what you're doing is wrong, but you're imposing a tax without representation. Also, I think you're going to have some unintended consequences. If you think about it, you also have a transportation benefit industry vote coming up in less than a year, which is two-tenths of a percent. People supported that because the roads are crappy. If you pass this without a vote of the people, I'm afraid that you're going to get backlash. And you're going to lose your transportation benefit this year. You know, two, what, five million dollars you've made so far? Two words get us in the roads. I just think you really need to slow down on this. There's no hurry on it. Take a little more time. Get out and talk to the people. Present it. I had to keep with the staff's presentation. I'd already heard you talking about the options of, of, of. Vote for, just you guys do it or vote of the people. It's just not right. If it's a great idea, they'll vote for it and they'll pass it like they have in the past. Don't ram this down people's throats. You're going to pay for it. The city's going to pay for it. Thanks.
Thank you, Mike.
Next is Julianne Gale.
I'm Julianne Gale and I just want to start by appreciating the homelessness task force that met in two thousand twenty-two. The staff and the council members for being solutions-focused. We hear people come and complain and complain and complain. And the reality is, we have this huge opportunity right now to, to move towards a positive solution. How many people in this room care about seniors staying out?
Julianne, try to talk to them.
Okay, well, all right. So I'm talking to you.
Okay, thanks.
You all can raise your hand behind me. How many care about making sure that there's housing for our veterans who've served our country? How many of you care about making sure every young person has a safe and stable place to live? That's what this is supporting. We have such a huge opportunity here and it would be such a shame to, to waste this opportunity. This is laying the foundations for future solutions, including laying the foundation for bringing in more investments into our community, not at the expense of taxpayers. If we have somebody who's able to pursue grants for public housing and other kinds of affordable housing and solutions and they're able to follow up on these opportunities, this three-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars a year could turn into millions and millions of dollars because that is what the federal government and the state government is offering and we're missing out on these opportunities. And I think this is such an exciting moment and an opportunity for each of us to be leaders. Should I somehow be able to afford a thousand-dollar purchase in the city of Shelton? I would be happy to give one extra dollar so that affordable housing could exist. And the basic necessities, things like your food and your groceries, that's not taxed. So it's not, you know, folks who are right on the margins. It'll either support them in housing or basic needs can still be met. And this is an opportunity for all of us to work together. Back in two thousand twenty-two, the Housing Needs Assessment said that there were more than five hundred extremely low-income and low-income new housing units needed. And that suggestion, which came from business owners, which came from citizens, which came from service providers, working together, trying to solve this problem, was we need to construct more affordable housing. We need to actually have more of it for the affordability to exist. This is a step in that direction. We have so much time to get together, a citizens committee, to talk with folks, to say, how are we going to use this money? How do we make sure that it's used well and it's, and it's funding the things that we want to see as a community? But let's not throw away this opportunity. We've been waiting since two thousand twenty-two, since that Housing Needs Assessment came out. We've been waiting since two thousand twenty-two when the homelessness task force, task force made some suggestions. There's a two-to-five-year waitlist for low-income housing. Let's get it done. Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, we have one person on Zoom and that is J.C. Osterberg Brown.
Good evening, everyone. I hope you can hear me all right. My name is J.C. Osterberg Brown and I am the Associate Director at the nonprofit New Horizon Communities. We create and manage tiny home villages with most recently opening up the Shelton Veterans Village here in Shelton in two thousand twenty-three. We provide permanent supportive housing for chronically homeless veterans. This type of housing is crucial for our community and is an evidence-based practice that has proven to lower chronic homelessness, increase housing stability, improve health, and lower public costs to crisis services such as jails, hospitals, and EMT services. New Horizon Communities is in full support of the one-tenth of one percent tax because Mason County has an affordable housing crisis. The Mason County Housing Needs Assessment in two thousand twenty-two showed that we need over five hundred affordable housing units and we have not come even close to meeting that need. The high cost of housing coupled with low inventory of units is resulting in substandard living conditions and the rise of homelessness. If this trend continues, it stands to threaten the very fabric of our community. Our housing production just simply needs to increase. Developers building affordable housing need public investments to make these projects happen and this tax would help make that possible. It's clear that some community members are very frustrated and are wanting solutions for a cleaner and safer city. But in order to do that, all of our community members need to be able to have places to live that are clean and safe for them. We applaud the city staff for doing the hard work needed to put together this request. This ordinance is an impactful and responsible way to show the residents and businesses how important they are to you. We're excited to see the positive influence these new revenues are going to have and your support for this ordinance will put your commitment to this community into action. Thank you very much.
All right. We have a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number two-zero-two-seven-dash-one-zero-two-four as presented.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let's get a reading first, Donna, please.
Yes. Ordinance number two-zero-two-seven-dash-one-zero-two-four. An ordinance of the City of Shelton, Washington, imposing an additional sales and use tax of one-tenth of one percent for housing and related services as authorized by RCW eight-two-point-one-four-point-five-three-zero and adding a new chapter, three-point-four-seven, to the Shelton Municipal Code.
Thank you, Donna. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number two-zero-two-seven-dash-one-zero-two-four as presented.
Comments or questions?
I would like to make a comment. I've been on this council for three years now. I have been personally attacked for not doing anything. Every argument that I've heard today against this measure is actually a reason for this measure. So I don't see the logic in someone talking about picking up stuff with cups and saying, that's something we can avoid if we can get people off the streets and that's something we can do. B, this is only a start. If you looked at the analysis, we are going to do more than just homelessness. We're going to increase the amount of housing. We're going to unblock the housing shortage in this town if we start doing this. Right now, our taxes are eight-point-nine percent. We go up to nine percent. It's still lower than Tumwater, which is nine-point-seven percent. We're not losing, no one's going over to Tumwater, big box stores, or coming from Tumwater to here to go get eight-point-nine percent over at our big box stores. That's what I'm saying. Like, we're not losing any revenue. We're collecting it not just from citizens of Shelton, but everyone in the whole county and this is a shared expense. If we don't do it here in this council, we cede this power to the county who will spend it not in the city, but other areas. We need to do this now. If we delay it for a vote, we can lose up to a year or two years and that's three-hundred-thousand dollars a year for delay. A lack of leadership is not doing this now. Leadership is doing this now and we are willing to take the consequences of a vote when you are allowed to vote for or against us if we run for our seats again next year. There is taxation, yes, but there's not, there is representation. So if we do this point-one-percent tax that impacts you on one dollar of one-thousand dollars, we are representing you to say, we are making the tough decisions that we are not going to let someone who trolls people on the internet with bad facts, with facts that just come out of nowhere. Two-point-five-million dollars from where? How is that being spent? Was it from the council? We have not spent that money. The only thing we have done are about eight or nine things that our city manager talked about. We, just the list of things is that we, we created smaller units. We took away the height limits. We did also, we created single-room occupancy available downtown. We've done so many things that are positive for this community and no one talks about those things. We have set up, we have deregulated and allowed people access in a private and non, and private and public partnership to increase the housing our community. We need to step up and say, now we've got leverage money to say, hey, we will join you in this project and we will give you seed money for that. Or if you don't have that, that rent money for this, this month, we can actually give people rent money to stay in their house. I've seen so much hard work by all the members of our nonprofit community for people who have lost everything, not necessarily by their fault. It's okay to be angry at capitalism because that's what you're really mad about is the corporatism that's going on, that you're really mad at people above us, above our grade level.
Let's stay on point.
Okay. I'm just telling you, this is a chance right now to do something for our community in our neighborhoods, right here, right now, without delay and to not do this will cost us money. So if we go to a vote, it's going to cost us way more money and time and it's Christmas, it's cold winters here. People will die of exposure if we delay the, delay this. So blood will be on your hands, not mine. We need to do this now. We need to pass this now. And I am courageous enough to say, you vote me out if you, I'm up for seat in two thousand twenty-five, you come get me. But I am voting for our people right now. We are going to save lives and we're going to make sure that our city says, we are going to take care of all our residents. And that's, I see, see time.
Two weeks ago, and I'll say it again, I really do support this because I believe it gives us a variety of tools to address a lot of the problems that have been brought forward to us very regularly in public comment or online emails that we receive all the time about how we address our housing crisis. I think this is really, it's a big step in the right direction for us, so I will be supporting.
I have a lot to say. First of all, I think Mike Olson was spot on. We're going to lose community trust in a really good way if we push this through without giving a vote to the people. I want to listen to all the people, not just the people who work for the nonprofits. And I love the nonprofits here. I really do. But nine out of the ten of the people who spoke and for it work for the nonprofits. So that's, that's the truth here. I don't think we gave this enough time. We brought this to the table October eighth was the first time we talked about it. That's not a lot of time. We need a little more time for the community to be able to be responsive for this. Also, since two thousand thirteen, the state of Washington has spent billions of dollars on homelessness. on homelessness. And if the State of Washington, and I know that trickle down here, cannot, can spend billions of dollars, and we still have this problem, I don't feel like us burdening the community with this extra dollars is going to change enough to make it worth it, other than lose the trust of the people in our community. The new building code modifications that we made will make it so that we can make more housing available in our community, which is great, because then we're going to get the income from all of the permits and all those things, and that will bring more housing here. And it will bring some of, like, for instance, I live in a house that if I wanted to move into one of the nicer houses, my house will be available for somebody. The threat that the county is going to be able to control it, well, first of all, it's not on their agenda. Sorry, guys, it's really honestly not yet. And we need to work with the county anyways. So if, if the county is going to pass something down the road, that is our opportunity to work with them, and I think we should do that. Also, have we considered the liabilities this can bring to the City of Shelton? I don't want to worry about that. I mentioned how most of the people here who spoke for it, and I thank you so much for your, for your work with the nonprofits. Many of you, your jobs rely on this. And I understand that. You don't want to be worked out of a job, and you want more money for your job. I understand that.
Let's stay on point.
Yeah. I don't believe that we need to raise the taxes for these plans to happen. I think that they can happen naturally, especially with the permits and the money coming in that way. And I have to believe it was Aaron that said that we will always pass for emergency services? Often? I'm afraid, but what if we don't? What if we don't, because we've lost the trust of the people? So instead of taxing the people on all these small things, and another thing that gets me is everyone says, oh, it's such a small amount, and it's not on necessity, but it is, because toothpaste is a necessity, and soap is a necessity, and those things are taxed. But it's, wouldn't it be more important to bring good-paying jobs to communities so people can afford homes? And I guess that's enough. I'm going to stop there. Go ahead.
I am all in favor of helping people, facilities and veterans, people need, but I really think we should put this to a vote of people. I really do.
Everybody's spoken. I guess I'll just put my two cents in. We have a housing issue in Mason County. We've had a housing issue for years. As a matter of fact, the state has housing issues. We rely on the county, and there maybe there's two point five million dollars that were invested in, but it goes to organizations that are housing families, crossroads, as housing families, that money is going there. That money is going to Community Lifeline for single adults that are in crisis or have no homes, it's going to the Veterans Village, Kiody Village. It's going to Turning Point for domestic violence. So yes, if there's two and a half million dollars coming in the county, it is going to causes that are trying to mitigate some of the issues that we have. Frankly, on a personal note, you know, my mother, my stepfather passed away. My mother could not live on her own any longer, so she moved in with me. Luckily, I have the means to take care of my mother. She didn't quite need me when she moved in. Now she does, but when she first moved in, it was because she could not afford to live on her own any longer. My adult sons cannot afford to live on their own without me subsidizing, you know, for bills. I mean, it is really tough. Rents are high. Home prices are high. On a personal, I've struggled in my life. I mean, I've been bankrupt for medical bills. I've let a house go because I could not afford to put a mound subject system in when it failed. I, you know, I had people that supported me and helped me. I had a boss that had faith in me. I moved up the chain of command and ended up running fifty convenience stores. That same boss loaned me money to buy my first store. I sold that store, and I made a profit, and I bought two more stores over the years, and done well there. Because people had, people had faith in me. People helped me. Different reasons, but but I want to help somebody if I can. If I can get somebody off of the street somewhere, I want to help them. Am I for taxes? Absolutely not. I have voted no on tax decreases on this council in my seven years. I voted no on regulations in the last seven years. If I didn't think, I didn't think we needed it. We, our general fund is struggling at the moment. We need solutions to homelessness, housing issues. We need to be able to support the nonprofits in town. I don't, I don't get it. I don't know why that we're arguing over this. This is such a small amount of money, which could leverage such big dollars. I mean, I want porta-potties downtown to address some of the issues. And I think we have some support now to do that in town in a few locations. The state is facing a huge budget deficit, so we're not going to be getting, probably getting money, and our nonprofits will probably be not going to get much money from the state this next biennium. This also gives us a little bit of a say in how we deal with homelessness. The county does dish out commerce dollars through the Housing Payment Reporting Board, with Councilmember Sap is on. I was on it for seven years. And there's a lot of people, there's a lot of smart people looking at this problem, and really, I know that throwing money at things is not always the answer, but we're not throwing anything at it. We were throwing park guys to clean up parks, we're throwing staff at, police at it, we're throwing the judge and prosecutors and public defenders, you know. We're spending money. Let's try to spend the money to try to get them out of that, out of, out of the homelessness mess. I do go downtown every single day. I drive by Community Lifeline every single day, multiple times a day. I see something, I call the city manager, and he, and you know, he'll, he'll take care of it, or I'll call the chief of police, and he'll take care of it, you know. Last night, there was somebody had a little bit of a fire out in the street. People would notice, hey, put it out, or I'm calling the cops, and they did, and we moved on, but let's talk about eight counties in the state have adopted this. It was benefit seventy-five cities. That's King, Pierce, Watcom, Thurston, Skagit, Island, Calum, and Jefferson County. Cities who have imposed it are twenty so far. Anna Cortez, Bainbridge, Bellevue, Covington, East Wenatchee, Ellensburg, Isopla, Lacey, Longview, Maple Valley, North Bend, Olympia, Port Angeles, Paulsville, Renton, Snohomie, Spokane, Tacoma, Vancouver, and Wenatchee, of all those council committees. Let's talk about everybody at this time for the tax that we're all talking about. How much tax does the city get, Mr. City Manager, for your general fund?
Less than one percent, right? It's less than one percent. It's point eight five of one percent. Six point five percent goes to the state. One, one point one percent is criminal justice. Point five, I'm sorry, point six is the transit. Point one goes to county mental health, nine-one-one, juvenile detention. So out of the eight point nine percent, the city is getting my math here. We're getting the point eight five two tenths from the, or the benefit district and criminal justice. We're getting less one point two percent, I believe, is what we run our general fund on, not nine percent. The state gets six point five right off the top of that, so we're not rich with nine percent. If we were, we would, they'd be driving roll horses out there on the staff if we got nine percent sales tax to operate our city on. We don't. It, it's a small price to pay for such a big thing. I'm more excited about leveraging those dollars with grants. I'm excited about maybe if, you know, funds do dry up in the state, that we're going to be able to keep doors open in places. I mean, we heard today that our Veteran Village has twenty-five out of thirty homeless veterans. That's crazy. Why are veterans even homeless? I mean, I don't even get that, but it's I, I, I understand that it is attached. I understand that some feel that it's, we're doing this council-matically, and it's tax representation. I was voted in by the people once, contested, obviously, and once I wasn't. Nobody ran against me, but I was voted to make tough decisions and tough choices, and and this is a tough choice. I mean, no doubt, anytime you want to raise a tax, and I, and I also am concerned about the benefit district for the roads. I mean, that is a huge thing. We did a lot of work with the roads, and that shows that we are good stewards of your money. We, we did, we paved roads, we've leveraged dollars, we did a gateway project with the highway south. You know, I don't like the roundabout, but that's where the money came from. You know, there are, there are lots, lots of projects we've done with that transition benefit district, and we leveraged those dollars and made it work. And we're going to do the same thing with this tonight, if we can get this passed. I urge the council to pass this. It is a small price to pay for us to try to mitigate some of the downtown issues that we have. That's what I have to say. So we have a motion to second. The approved ordinance number two zero two seven dash one zero two four is presented. A roll call, go please, Donna.
Thank you. Any council member will respond with a yes or a no, so I can make sure to report your answers correctly. I would appreciate that. Councilmember Blush?
No.
Councilmember Sterns?
No.
Councilmember Gilmore?
Yes.
Mayor Nisco?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sherman?
No.
Councilmember Saab?
No.
And Councilmember Gutierrez?
Yes.
Motion fails. That's it. All right. The last action item is also from mine.
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council. Bringing to you tonight for action our two thousand and twenty-five legislative agenda. There is one change from the December third meeting. I'll point out to you in the list of agenda items, the Wallace Neeland and Shelton Springs Roundabout or Intersection Project was erroneously labeled as the Wallace Neeland and Thirteenth Street intersection, so we changed that, updated that for your consideration tonight. As you know, we have one point six million dollars in grant funds already contributed to that project, so this would be further funds to help design and hopefully construct that project to alleviate some of the transportation issues that we have there. I'll reiterate that number one priority is water and water storage. The Mountview Pressure Zone, reservoir number two, would be the top priority that we pass on to our legislature. The council's approval tonight, we will fill out the capital funding requests to our thirty-fifth delegation, so they have that in their hands when the session starts that first year, and we hope she's worked with them to continue their investment and their support in the community to help move us forward with economic development and infrastructure improvements here, so. Just to summarize, the Mountview Reservoir Pressure Zone, number two, multimodal path, so this former Simpson Railroad and the connection to Marina in downtown, Wallace Neeland and Shelton Springs Roundabout, and then the homeless mitigation side of the top four priorities within the legislative agenda this year.
All right. We have a reading of resolution number one, a public comment?
No, there isn't, Mr. Mayor.
Right. They're reading a resolution one three five three dash one zero two four.
Resolution number one three five three dash one zero two four. A resolution of the City of Shelton, Washington, establishing the two thousand and twenty-five legislative agenda.
Thank you, Donna. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, move to approve resolution number one three five three dash one zero two four as presented.
Question? All right, we have motion to second to approve resolution number one three five three dash one zero two four presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. We're now at our new item that we added. Imagine Mark Bigler.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, again. I'm going to ask Chief Coasted answer any questions for you. He's been dealing with this, as well as Finance Director Mike Givens over a number of years. So Shelton Municipal Code five point three two for higher vehicles. We've tried to review our municipal code on a regular basis. Sometimes it just comes to light when an issue presents itself. Most recently, the Police Department has gone through a a audit, that's the word, audit from Washington State Patrol when they look at audit, they they cover many things, but as well the access or the fingerprinting system that we utilize through Washington State Patrol. They brought some concerns to the chief. Chief brought this to my attention, and the city attorney, Haggard, and so we started looking at this code a little more specifically. And it's, it's really an archaic code, so this licenses taxis and for higher services within the City of Shelton. We believe it's essentially duplicate, duplicate service, duplicate licensing service with the State Department of Licensing, and it's onerous for the city to implement not only for our Police Department, but also for our Finance Department. These businesses would still obtain City of Shelton business licenses, but the actual licensing of the individuals that operate one of the vehicles would, what we propose if we came back to the council for for repeal or edits, would be shifted to Department of Licensing. At this point, what we would ask is that the council take action tonight to suspend Shelton Municipal Code Chapter five point three two until we brought it back for council consideration sometime after the first year. The reason why we're bringing it to you tonight is because many of these licenses are for the calendar year, so we're starting to get these right now from operators for the calendar year two thousand and twenty-five. We don't want to run them through the process, take their fees, if this is something we're going to consider repealing soon into the first year, so this gives us some time to put this effort together, communicate with these applicants that this can be under consideration with the council. We can take action at a date. Chief, anything else to add?
Just the, the undue stresses it causes upon my department when we're duplicating a service that D O L already provides. There's an application process, there's a fingerprinting process. Some of my officers are actually involved when they do vehicle inspections. This is not something that I feel that we is great for our budget or our tax dollars being spent towards our law enforcement services to provide the service for these types of licenses. D O L provides the services. These, we only have one company within the city right now that is actually utilizing licenses through the Shelton Police Department, and they're already getting their licenses through D O L, so it is a duplicate process, and we're we're not getting any, the review is not worked for our department to be involved anymore.
Thank you. This is an action.
This is an action.
Anybody in the public want to talk on this issue, about taxi service licenses, correct? Pretty much.
Yeah, for higher taxis or higher services, correct. This is not, I'll clarify, this is not applied to Uber, Lyft, or those services.
Do we have a reading on this, Donna, or do we just make a motion?
We have a motion time. We don't have a resolution presented to you, so it's by motion at this point, Mr. Mayor.
Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor moves to suspend Shelton Municipal Code five point three two until further action by this council.
All right.
Yeah, you've already answered the questions that I had. We've only had one. So thank you, and it doesn't apply to Lyft and Uber. Thanks.
And to clarify, council, I don't see any reason why we won't have something for you at the first meeting of the new year on the seventh of January for consideration. We, we, quickly and, and make sure this is cleaned up.
All right, we have a motion to second, suspend Shelton Municipal Code five point three two until further action by council. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Who carries? All right, we have a city manager report.
Last meeting of the year for the council kind of earlier than normal, but with the holidays, don't have the study session scheduled, so I just want to thank council for all your efforts so far this year and look forward to going into next year. There's a storm going on outside. I'm not sure. I can't hear it right now, but I heard the rain earlier. I really have to thank our, our engineering staff, our public works crews, and crews throughout all our departments. They've been out preparing. We've got backup pumps online down the main treatment plant. The UV, the backup UV protection is, is checked out, you know, they made sure all the bulbs are working. They've gone through, and they, they've made, they've taken measures to increase capacity for flow, flows increased. We get a lot of rainwater that enters our system from either old leaky pipes, what we call I N I, and flow, uh, inflow and infiltration through old leaky pipes. There are still portions of this community and old buildings where their downspouts may be connected into our sewer lines. So that increases the flow into the system, increases the stress on that plant, so it's really important that our staff stay involved. And on top of that, we have a SCADA system. They man, they man and manage, and that'll, that'll alert, alert us of issues that might come about, but in instances like this.
But in instances like this, uh, we're much more proactive. Crews are also checking um kind of the usual suspects, if you will, so Neeland Street, First Street, some of those front streets, some of those places. Uh, drainages like Revena Trail Canyon Creek where it enters down at at the bottom of the hill and places like that to make sure they're clear and free, so we uh we minimize any damage that might occur with the with the heavy rains we're experiencing. The ground's starting to get a little bit saturated. Uh, we've got a very high tide somewhere after nine o'clock tomorrow morning, so that that just increases the the vulnerability of some some lowland flooding, at least uh for a short period of time. So um appreciate the crews um being out there and they're monitoring it as uh as the night goes on.
That'll cover it. All right. Merry Christmas also. Here's everybody else. All right, councilman, you had it for discussion.
Uh, just wanted to ask, how soon can we uh sit G four back on the agenda for a public vote? Uh, Mr. City Manager?
Um, well, I guess that would be a decision by council. I mean, i- is it the same, the same ordinance?
Yeah, the same ordinance.
Um, I'd have to ask legal review um specifically. Once, once the council's taken action, how how long it would be to to come back? So uh let me, let me find that out, see what uh, see what legal has uh.
Is it maybe six months, a year, just in ballpark? Just wanted to know, is it because, yeah, we we talked about the cost. How much would it cost to put on ballot?
Ballot measures depend on how many items, how many issues are on the ballot. If you approximately, if you went to a special election or one of this, and it was the only ballot measure, it'd be around twelve thousand dollars. I've had some ballot measures that have been around eight, depending on how much is on the, again, is on the ballot in the area, so um, depends, I guess, let's put it that way, but I'd say between eight and twelve.
Okay.
We'd like, since this is the last meeting of the year, um, talk about stretch for staff to bring us for the first of the year about the downtown homeless problem. I mean, how we want to address it. Um, we might need to reopen the budget and put a little bit of our general fund money um in it, because like I said, we earlier, we have no, no skin in the game. We have no money in in the problem and the mitigation. So I think that we probably should maybe find some ideas tonight to get staff uh get ready for next year and find, bring some options on how we can uh mitigate some of it. Uh, you know, we talked about the the porta potties. I think we did have consensus, I think, for porta potties. I damn challenge for a couple of them, so that's one. We're going to have to, you know, budget for that. Is there other issues we can, we can budget for, uh, you know, for potentially mitigation sites and stuff like that? Do we have property that we can offer to nonprofits to perform mitigation site? I mean, anybody got any ideas on where we can go? With this, I mean, we got to have staff, I mean, do something, I mean, I don't think we can wrestle our way out of it. I mean, I know some would like us to, but we can't, we can't do that. Obviously, at a hundred and sixty bucks a day, plus medical, plus puppet defender prosecutor, judge, and jail, you know, is going to run us out, run us out of money. And then um we're going to start laying off staff, so we we need to talk about how how we're going to work on this issue. What are we going to do? What what's our goal? What's our goal downtown? What's our goal with the homeless and and the housing stock?
So, Mr. Mayor, we do have subcommittee for uh homelessness, and we do talk about these, and we have talked about a lot of these measures, and uh
Well, we got a full council here now, and we got staff that we can give some direction to and what we want to look at in the first of the year, because we always hear that we do the same thing over and over again, we get the same results, so let's do something different. Let's, let's talk about it. Let's, let's plan something.
So we um are getting porta potties as far as I understand, so that there's that. Um, we have looked at possible dual patients. There's also that.
Should we?
We had a list that we've done about eight or nine things that were unfunded, and we had a chance to have funding and we don't have it now, so um, hopefully next year we can put together something that um is meaningful and direct service to folks who need it. But um, it's not going to be a Merry Christmas for showing people out there tonight.
I guess we don't have Lich to offer or to direct you with.
Mr. Mayor, I can take comments. Um, and we can develop a work session um after the first of the year um based on council's priorities. Um, certainly, we've done some work with the uh Homelessness Response Subcommittee. Um, there's, there's work to be done to address a number of those bulleted items. Um, but I think it's probably time to revisit that with the council in its entirety and make sure that there's um there's, there's a majority that uh that agrees moving forward. We we have just, just as of this morning, talked about some sites to assist the local nonprofit with some site readiness um work, and so I just had the opportunity to discuss that in briefings with council, so I'll have a, I'll have more information and report for you on on that, kind of what what some of the feelings are or some of the directions from the entire council. Um, as you know, you know, it'll take, it takes some time to go through with seven, seven of you, but uh certainly a study session is probably most appropriate time to further refine the direction for twenty twenty-five um in a number of areas, not just, not just homeless response and housing.
Right. Only other new items for discussion? Our next meeting will be Tuesday, January seventh, twenty twenty-five at six P M. The study session is December twenty-fourth, we think canceled. This committee is adjourned at seven forty-seven P M.